Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lebanon City Council, May 24th, 2022. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mr. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Sellers?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Lamro?
Here.
Mr. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Excuse me.
Mr. Coe?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation in the front room.
Dear Lord, thank you for Lebanon, for the town that we have, for what we represent here. Thank you for a country that we can come and gather with opinions on both sides, that we can speak freely without fear of retribution, Lord. Thank you for all that you have blessed us with. Thank you for the love that you continue to bestow on us as we seek your way, Lord Jesus, as we seek the promises that you bestow on us, Lord. We thank you for being there for us in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In consideration of council meeting minutes April 26th, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
In consideration of work session meeting minutes April 18th, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Thank you for the work you put in on those minutes. Mr. Burke? Next, we have Dave McCandless from Congressman Shabbat's office. He will be giving us an update from the congressman's office.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, and good evening to all of these here tonight. As I said, my name is David McCandless with Congressman Steve Shabbat's office. For those of you that don't know me, I've been in the congressman's Warren County office since 2013, when it first came into the district, and have worked for him in my official capacity since 2011. So most folks, when they think of Congress, the Capitol, you know, they think of, you know, what's going on that they either like, don't like, or what's not going on in DC, and think purely from the legislative side of things. Well, here in the district office, we play two important functions, the first of which being community outreach, which is getting out to council meetings such as this to hear what's going on in your local community. You know, who knows? Maybe it could spur a letter of support for a federal grant. You know, really, who knows? We do other events like chamber functions. We tour small businesses. We did a school visit to Donovan Elementary not too long ago, as well as get out to important county facilities. Last week, I was out at the Hamilton County, or the Warren County Veterans Intervention Court, watching their help, watching their folks graduate and presenting them with certificates of special congressional recognition. So we feel like it's important to stay engaged with the community right here on the ground and not be some far-off entity in DC that people feel like they have no attachment to. The second function that we all, that we play here in the district is constituent services. And basically, what that boils down to is customer service. You know, if you've been on the phone with Social Security for three hours and you're at your wits' end, you know, who can you turn to? Same thing applies with the VA. Maybe you need a passport overnight. Our office, as does Senator Portman and Senator Brown and the White House, have senior contacts within each federal agency. So personally, under my portfolio, I handle anything that falls under the Department of Defense, the Department of Veterans Affairs, and the Small Business Administration. The last has been quite busy, as you can imagine, as a lot of small business owners have been suffering during the pandemic. Same goes with veterans. But I've been helping a lot of small businesses as they seek to get their idle modification approved, navigate their way through the PPP program, which the congressman helped to create. But if you happen to know anyone, you know, whether it's a passport issue, an IRS refund, an immigration issue, you know, regardless of politics, we leave that at the door. Please send them our way. All the services are free of charge. We just want to be the go-between when you're at your wits' end and need some assistance outside of the traditional channels. We do have a few special projects that we work on here in the district. One is the Congressional Art Competition. I do not oversee that, but if you are an interested student and want to participate with the chance to have your art hung either in our district office or in the US Capitol, please don't hesitate to reach out. My favorite part of the job is the Service Academy nominations process. So by law, members of Congress give nominations to very bright, far brighter than me, students who are interested in attending West Point, Annapolis, the Air Force Academy, or the Merchant Marine Academy. We get to fill up to 10 vacancies per academy, per opening, per year. It's a lengthy process. It starts in October and goes, really, until now, as the academies ultimately make that final offer of admission to the limited folks of the folks that we have nominated. So if you happen to know any interested junior or senior, or maybe they're a freshman and, or maybe they're a go-getter in grade school, they've come to some of our info nights, please don't hesitate to have, send them my way so we can kind of talk best practices so that they can be successful and we can continue to nominate and be blessed with the talented students here in our district. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have, and if I can't answer them, happy to get back.
What's the best way to email or phone call, or what's the best way to make contact?
Yes, so our office is, our office hours are nine to five. You're welcome to reach out by phone or email. I do my best to try to get back to anyone who called. Maybe I missed a call same day, but you're welcome to email me. My email address is public. It's on our website, as well as on my card, and the telephone number is 513-421-8704. And that number is specific to our Warren Academy office. Any other questions?
David, thanks for coming tonight. I can speak to your community engagement. You are everywhere, all the time. So you do a great job with that, and I commend your office for that. So thank you for the service you provide to everybody.
Well, thank you for the kind words, and thank you all for being here. If our office can ever be of assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Now for our Pro-Life Day proclamation. I'd like to bring up Mayor Amy Brewer, as she will be receiving this proclamation on behalf of herself, as well as the council from last year. I think she's around here somewhere. There she is. Amy, thank you for your service to our community in the stand you took a year ago, and I am honored to present this proclamation to you. Be it proclaimed, whereas every child has the right to life and that life is created at the moment of conception with a unique human nature, genetic identity, and limitless potential, and whereas the character and heart of a people is revealed by how it treats its most vulnerable citizens, and whereas we must be committed to working across racial, ethnic, religious, political, economic divides with grace, compassion, and understanding if we aim as a people to protect and defend the sanctity of human life, and whereas the right to life is first-listed and most fundamental right brought to bear in America's most aspirational document, the Declaration of Independence, and whereas no right to terminate innocent life is rooted in the traditions of the American people, and no national right to terminate innocent life is directly conferred by the Constitution of the United States, and whereas on May 25th, 2021, the Lebanon City Council unanimously enacted a policy to protect and defend innocent human life within our city limits. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the City Council of Lebanon, Ohio, express their sorrow at the loss of life and physical and psychological harm caused by decades of legalized abortion to the unborn children, their mothers and families, and the communities surround them, that the members of the City Council of Lebanon, Ohio, shall make every effort to secure for its children at every stage of development all the rights, privileges, immunities available to persons, citizens, and residents of the city until a decisional interpretation of the United States Constitution by the United States Supreme Court provide protection for every human being. Now therefore, I, Mark Andrew Messer, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, Ohio, do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2022, and every year as Pro-Life Day.
I asked Mayor Messer if I could say a few words. Of course, those that know me know that that's very important to me as I stand here this evening on a monumental day one year ago. Mayor Messer, I sat in your seat with Vice Mayor Matthews. A few of my fellow council members could not be here. Many of the individuals that are behind me this evening were also here. It was a very tough meeting. It was a meeting where we heard views and perspectives of so many people, those that shared my views and those that shared a very different perspective. I've made in 32 years, I made some hard decisions. This one, I felt, was one that I truly believed in, what I felt was important for the majority of Lebanon City, for the City of Lebanon. I think at the end of my comments, after hours of hearing conversation, is that when we make any kind of decision, there's going to be a yes or there's going to be a no. We live, leave here, and I hope this evening, that we leave here knowing that there are many different perspectives on the issues. Some of us support what we did. I hold strongly in my views and my perspective on that, and I hold my head up high as I leave here with this proclamation. And there will be those here that do not share my view or my perspective, and I hope that as adults, that we can walk away being kind, being considerate. I mean, I know that there are many, there are people here from Lebanon. We represent Lebanon. We don't represent City of Cincinnati as an example. And I know there's leadership here from City of Cincinnati. And I say to those leaders, stay in your lane, make decisions, make decisions for your community as an example. I think Cincinnati is per capita number one murder capital in the country. Stay in your lane, fix your issues. We all make decisions for our communities. A decision that Lebanon makes may be different than a decision Mason or another community makes. We make that. So stay true to your views, your ethics, and your constituents. Those are who you represent. You don't represent anybody else. So thank you for the opportunity, the honor to be here this evening. I applaud you, and I thank you. God bless you all.
I see Joe Schaefer in the back. He poked his head through, so I just want to acknowledge him for being here tonight. So thank you, Joe, for coming. Moving on to recognition of visitors. Again, I was here. Adam was here a year ago, and I think Amy ran an absolutely fantastic meeting, and we're going to stick with the spirit of that. We're going to be respectful. We're going to listen to each other. We're going to be adults here, and in the interest of decorum, I want to make sure that we're not clapping back and forth to each other. I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak, and I want to do it decently in order and so we can get the most out of tonight's meeting. So with that, I'm going to have Mr. Urich read over some of the council rules so everybody's on the same page, because I want to make sure everybody gets the opportunity to speak, and I would hate to have to remove anybody from the room. So thank you for that.
So I'm going to read Rule 4 of the Rules of Council. Personal attacks criticizing the character or person of a speaker rather than the wisdom of his or her ideas will not be permitted and shall be grounds for removal from chambers. Visitors to council in committee meetings must not disrupt the conduct of council or committee meetings by physical actions, excessive noise, or other disruptive or distracting behaviors. Following a request to cease disruptive behavior, the chair has the discretion to order the removal of persons who continue to disrupt meetings from council chambers for the duration of the meeting and/or such lesser period as the chair may determine. In the interest of other speakers and fair enforcement of council rules, time limits on speakers at council and committee meetings shall be strictly and equally enforced. When a speaker's time has expired, he or she shall promptly conclude his or her sentence and cease speaking. Any sign, placard, poster, or other item brought into council chambers, which would include your whiteboards, containing obscene or profane language or threats of physical violence which the chair determines are intended as a disruption of the meeting, shall be subject to removal at the discretion of the chair. At the request of the chair, violators must remove from council chambers any sign found to be in violation of this rule. The chair has the discretion to order the removal of persons who continue to violate this rule following a warning. In sum, we welcome the participation of everyone with their, each of their views in the democratic process. The Citizens Forum and recognition of visitors is set up to allow the community and others to speak, but we ask that you be respectful, that you act like adults, and don't do anything to embarrass yourselves, for instance, by commenting on another person's appearance or any kind of personal attack on a person for reasons that really just don't have any place in a dignified adult council meeting.
Thanks, sir. When I call you up, what we'll need is your name and address, and Mr. Burke will be timing you on his phone. The alarm will go off at three minutes. I just hate cutting people off, so hopefully you can hear that. Please, when you hear the tone, just wrap your comments up as quickly as possible, try and finish out that sentence, and then we will move on to our next visitor. So with that, we have Marge Murray. Marjorie Murray.
Hello, everyone. My name is Margie Murray, and I live at 5625 Richmond Park Drive in Mason, Ohio. And I just want to congratulate you on passing this legislation and for being strong and supporting life, and it just makes your community so much more attractive. I know it did pass in Mason, and then they overturned it, unfortunately, but I'm just so happy for Lebanon that you guys stand with life, and although I don't live in Lebanon, definitely want to, and I do come here, and some people are saying that, you know, because of this pass, people weren't going to come into Lebanon as much, and they weren't going to, you know, it was going to hurt the economy and everything, but I would say that it's definitely, from the people that I know, not hurting the economy of Lebanon either, which really shouldn't be a reason why you would choose life because, for money reasons, but to protect unborn life and protect children in the womb who are defenseless. But thank you for standing for life, and we support you, and God bless.
Thank you, Marge. I'm going to mess up this first name. I can't tell if it's a V or an R. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Laura Streetman, 1802 West Galbraith Road. I serve as Executive Director of Cincinnati Right to Life, founded in 1967, just south of here, by the pioneers of the pro-life movement, Dr. Jack Wilkie and his wife Barbara. We can say that really, all defensive life began in Ohio, and it's great to know that Lebanon really showed what our state stands for. I'd also like to start just by saying that in the past year, since you have become a sanctuary city for the unborn, I have spent more time and money in Lebanon than I have in the years before that. This was always a wonderful place for me to come and enjoy your train, eat at Golden Lamb, shop the antique stores, but I've actually been very intentional of coming here and supporting the small businesses here because of this, knowing just to show that actually people do want to come where you proclaim that you are anti-violence. We know that in every abortion procedure, a child, a preborn child loses its life, and it's tragic. And let's remember that you have kept violence out of Lebanon by not allowing these children to be poisoned, decapitated, dismembered, or suffocated in your beautiful city, the city where so many presidents have come and visited, where it's really stood for what our constitution stands for: life. And let's remember, the word abortion is not in our constitution. When Roe versus Wade was tragically passed in 1973, abortion was not made a constitutional right. That is, you know, that is a talking point used by those that support the execution of preborn children, but we know that's not true at all. And I just want to thank you and affirm that this is actually good for Lebanon by obviously keeping violence out of your city, saving lives, and people do actually come here more frequently to support your community because you've taken this stand on supporting unborn Ohio children. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Peter St. Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Amy, the council that voted for life, I can't applaud you enough. I think you absolutely, positively spoke for the vast majority of Lebanon citizens. I also want to come to you, and I applaud you for that, and I want to kind of echo a couple of points that Amy hit on, and I'd like to talk about the issue that you guys are going to vote on for medical marijuana. Now, guys, I'm a child of the 70s. I did more than inhale. I did my share of this stuff. And I got to tell you, I helped usher in a movement in my high school in the 70s that I am ashamed of, and that is bringing marijuana to my friends and watching what it did to their lives. I know right now, there are people in the medical profession that are telling us that this is a good thing, that this will treat depression, this will treat all kinds of issues, but I watched firsthand what happened, and I am guilty of getting some of my best friends hooked on marijuana, which led to other drugs, which led to people today that are dead because of actions that I took in high school introducing marijuana. Now, there are other drugs, there are other things out there that people can use to treat depression, and I got to tell you, as a citizen who worked hard to get many of you on this panel elected today, I hope and I pray you will take the stand that you took when you voted for life, and you will. Listen, there's already a dispensary here. I don't care, you could, the pharmaceutical industry has our kids on so many drugs, they can't think straight. I am a business owner that can't find young people that want to work because they're drugged up, and we don't need more drug people. And there's plenty out there, and I really want to encourage you, please, don't legalize growing marijuana here. Don't bring more marijuana into the, the people who put you here are very conservative-thinking people, and we don't want this in our community. I guarantee you, I am speaking for the vast majority of Lebanon citizens right now. We don't want more. We want a place that children can grow up and not be affected by this stuff. And you can say what you want. It starts with medical marijuana, then it becomes recreational marijuana, and I know people living in Colorado right now that are looking to get out of their state because of the effects of legalized marijuana. It doesn't help business. It doesn't help your community. We do not want this here, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Pete. Amy St. Jean.
Hi, counsel.
Hello.
First, I want to thank you for serving the community. I don't think I'd ever want to do your job, so thank you. I'm on a fact-finding mission. So the first thing I would like to know is, does the dispensary owner that is looking to come into Lebanon live in Lebanon?
There is no dispensary owner.
So you're just voting on whether they're allowed in?
Yes.
But you don't know anybody personally yet? Okay. So my second question is, why is it necessary to allow a medical marijuana dispensary in Lebanon? Other cities have said no. Why could it be that Lebanon wants to say yes? Any of you who think you're going to vote yes on this, why do you feel it's necessary in Lebanon?
As much as I would like to have that debate, this, the decorum is not about a question-and-answer session right now, because when everybody else comes up, it'll be question-and-answer, and it will not be done in three minutes. I think everybody knows where I stand, strongly against it. This is just not the form for it. It's not in the decorum that was played out.
Okay, so can we have lunch someday?
Yeah.
And then I can ask each one of you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, that's it? Great, I look forward to that lunch.
Brighton Smith.
Hello. My name is Brighton Smith, and I'm a resident here in Lebanon. I live on Meadow Lane. I wanted to come here, I was here a year ago, to speak on behalf of the Sanctuary City Ordinance, and I am proud of what the city and the city council have done. It's often said that courage is freedom and freedom is happiness. I believe that this city and this council displayed a lot of courage a year ago when you guys passed the Sanctuary City Ordinance here in Lebanon, and I believe that what you did was protect an essential freedom, the very first freedom and the foundational freedom on which all other freedoms rest, because without life, none of the other freedoms matter, none of our other rights matter. And I believe that that's to be commended and applauded, and I'm proud of this city for declaring tomorrow to be Pro-Life Day here in Lebanon. My wife and I appreciate what you guys do, and we want to let you know that there are lots of other community members, such as myself, that support you all. So thank you. Thank you all very, very much. We have friends who honestly live out of town, who are considering moving here because of what the city represents, and I believe that those who say that what you all did and what the city stands for is detrimental or is hurting our community, I believe that those people are wrong, and I understand their concerns, because anytime you take a strong stance on something, there's always the risk of offending people. But as was said before I came up here, that should never be a reason or motivation for doing the right thing. Doing the right thing should be done regardless of repercussions, regardless of risks, and that is where the courage comes from. That is where the freedom comes from. And a result of that courage and that freedom, I believe, is the happiness and the joy that you all have brought to our community, to our families, and to our friends, and I appreciate it. So thank you all very, very much for what you did.
Thank you, Brighton. Kathy Grossman.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I just want to congratulate the City of Lebanon on your proclamation to declare May 25th Pro-Life Day in Lebanon, Ohio. What a wonderful, wonderful day tomorrow, May 25th. What a wonderful, wonderful day tomorrow, May 25th, will be, and what a great year it's been in Lebanon. Congratulations for adopting a sanctuary city ordinance in Lebanon just a year ago. I know that took courage, as someone who led meetings, many, many meetings on that topic, over whether to adopt that legislation in the city of Mason, I know how difficult and stressful that process was, but also what a blessing it was that we could, as Americans, come together and talk about our viewpoints, as different as some of them were. It was a wonderful privilege for women in our country and men in our country to come together and debate the issue. Sadly, our sanctuary city ordinance was reversed, but that didn't mean that it didn't have a lot of support, it did. And so, again, congratulations and thank you for your courage. It's not easy to make a decision like that on behalf of your city, but it certainly was the right one to make. I did notice on your agenda tonight that you'll be voting on a moratorium for 120 days on whether or not to expand medical marijuana businesses in the city of Lebanon. I'm not real up to speed on where you guys are at with that, but I am a little disappointed that there's a moratorium on the agenda and not a vote to zone it out. I think this is the wrong jurisdiction, and no jurisdiction really needs to expand access to marijuana, but I think Lebanon will be making a critical mistake expanding the businesses in the city of Lebanon. And I can confidently tell you that I would not support legalization of marijuana or expansion of the legalization of medical marijuana programs in the state of Ohio if I were a state legislator. It's not the right move, and I believe that the medical marijuana industry is a Trojan horse for recreational marijuana legalization. I did extensive research on this topic, we had hot debates and a very lengthy public hearing about it in the city of Mason a few years ago. And we ultimately, as your neighbors, decided to zone it out. And so, you know, we had a moratorium temporarily, but then we zoned it out and made a definitive decision on that. I think our vote was five to two to zone it out. So, I just implore you, Council, please, protect Lebanon, protect your citizens. I agree with the gentleman who spoke again about the dangers of marijuana. It doesn't reduce black market trade of marijuana, and Colorado has all kinds of problems. Many countries who have legalized marijuana have reversed that. Many of the states who started with medical marijuana eventually legalized recreational marijuana, and I fear Ohio could be moving in that direction. Thank you.
Joshua Beckman.
Good evening, members of council, my name is Josh Beckman, I live at 422 Lakefront. I just want to come up here and really just say thank you all for standing for life. I want to thank former Mayor Amy Brewer as well, for really standing firm to her beliefs, as well as the beliefs of her constituents. And I also want to thank former council member Doug Shoup for really spearheading this. I know this was really brought on by him, and this effort was really procured by him, and I just want to say thank you to him. And I also want to say thank you to former council members Monroe, as well as Schaefer, for really wanting to preserve life here in Lebanon. And this is what we stand for, as we see in the last election in November, we voted all of you in, and we did not get in the opposition, unfortunately. So, I just want to say that is what we stand on, and that is a representation of what we, as citizens, do believe, and therefore, this council is representative of its citizens. So, I just want to say thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Maggie Scochi? Is that right? Forgive me if I mess your name up.
In a second. Good evening, my name is Maggie Scoatis, and I'm the interim executive director at Women Have Options Ohio. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the ordinance that was passed a year ago. We are the statewide abortion fund, and we help people all across Ohio access abortion care in the state. One in four women access or need to access abortion care in their lives. That's 2,598 women in Lebanon alone. Every one of you knows someone who's had an abortion, whether or not you know it. Passing ordinances like this tells them that they are bad people, tells them that they are unloved, and we cannot stand for that. All abortion bans are based in white supremacy and eugenics. Bans such as the one that you all passed are justifiable, create the idea that it's justifiable to perpetuate violence, just like what happened in Buffalo last week. The language that you use today in your proclamation is the basis of white supremacist violence across the state and across the country. 60% of abortion seekers are parents, and rather than banning abortion or collecting donations, you could fund abortion across the state. We recognize this ordinance for what it is. It is political theater, and it's an attempt to scare and shame folks out of seeking abortion care that they want and need. But abortion is still legal in Ohio, period. And we are not going anywhere. We're going to continue to help the citizens of Lebanon when they call us, when they ask for our support, because we believe that everybody has a right to their bodily autonomy and to access the reproductive care that they want and need. And we will see you in court.
Thank you, Maggie. Emily Morgan.
She's in the middle of the block.
Is she outside?
Yeah.
Emily Morgan, can you hear me back there?
Actually, it's a microphone.
Oh, is it not? Okay. Yeah, I'll go to the next one. Reverend Jerry Williams.
My name is the Reverend Terry Williams, I reside at 47 and 1/2 East Main Street in the city of Chillicothe. And Mayor, before I speak, I hope I'm not out of turn, but would you be able to lead us in a moment of silence for those individuals who lost their lives today in Texas, in Uvalde?
I heard, I heard that happening on my way in, and I'd be happy to. If everyone could join us in a moment of silence honoring those who lost their lives Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, my name is the Reverend Terry Williams, and I am from Chillicothe. You might be wondering, what is a person from Chillicothe doing in Lebanon tonight? I will say that I did watch your meeting of a year ago tomorrow. I did watch from afar, because it is of interest to me what you are doing in this place, and how you are treating people who seek abortion care. I am here tonight because, over the last year, I have built a great number of relationships, unfortunately, with individuals in this community who have sought my care as a person who provides pastoral care. In addition to my work in the parish at Orchard Hill United Church of Christ, the congregation within which I serve, I am a faith organizer with Faith Choice Ohio, a proudly pro-abortion organization that provides care, education, and counseling to individuals across all spectrums of religious faith. I didn't get, in two years before you passed this ordinance, I didn't get a single call or referral from Lebanon, Ohio. But we've received over three dozen in the years since. Individuals who feel shamed, who feel belittled, who feel harmed because they have to seek care in a city that tells them they are wrong or somehow immoral. It is offensive to me because abortion bans are against my religion, they are against the religion of a great number of individuals, and those of us who are pro-abortion people of faith are not going away. I need you to understand that no matter what you do, and no matter what you pass, whether it is this ordinance, or an amendment that I hear is in the works, or whatever you might continue to do, people of faith have been helping individuals access abortion care since well before Roe v. Wade, will be here well after. In this place, we support people who've had abortions, we support people who are going to have abortions, and it's nobody's business except the individual what they do with their bodies. Individuals died today because they lost control over that most sacred right, the right to control their own body. In your ordinance, you would usher in a world where individuals lose rights at the moment of birth, lose the ability to say no to what happens to their bodies. Friends, this is not the future that any of us deserve. It's not the future that I'm willing to allow happen. It's not the future that I know many in this room are willing to allow happen. So, to invite us into this community, all you need to do is continue to do what you've done. Disregard patients, stigmatize abortion care, and continue pretending that you can legislate from those seats what individuals must receive in terms of care. Here's a newsflash, friends, you can't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Emily's not here, Mayor.
She is, she's in the hall. Is she, Emily?
I've been, I went through the hall. She just walked back in. Obviously. Hello, Emily.
Hi, my name is Emily, I've actually had the pleasure of speaking before several of you before, thank you for giving me this chance. At 15, I was raped. A few weeks later, I found out I was pregnant, as if bearing the trauma of rape wasn't enough. I had to decide if I was going to bring a child of hate into this world or abort it. I remember thinking about what both of those scenarios looked like. My future was at stake. My choice was clear, I chose myself. I walked through anti-abortion protesters screaming about what a monster I was on the way to saving my future. I have never regretted my decision, I will never regret my decision. I am here today, as I have been before, to fight for you, for your future. It is time to be good humans. It is time to represent the people of this community, not just what you believe. And it is time to be loud in and out of the voter's box. We will elect better officials if you can't step up and be what we need you to be. I ask that you consider this for your city, for your children that might one day share my story, and for your future.
Thank you, Emily. Reverend Corey Wagenfield.
Hello, members of council, my name is Reverend Corey Wagenfield. I live in Hamilton, Ohio, but I have been called to serve as a pastor here in Lebanon. I was asked by some people in the community to come speak this evening on how the evangelical Lutheran church in America, another Christian denomination, views access to abortion. I want to make it perfectly clear that I am not here this evening to speak on behalf of my congregation here in Lebanon. To speak on their half would be disingenuous, because not everyone thinks and believes exactly the same thing that I do. Within our congregation, we have people on opposing ends of the political spectrum, opposing ends of the theological spectrum, and definitely on opposing ends of the discussion of legalized abortion. The amazing thing is, even though we differ in so many ways, we found a way to coexist and live together as a loving community. Why is that? Because we love and care for the people around us. And as part of that loving and caring, we truly listen to one another in hope of understanding where the other person is coming from, not rushing to immediate judgments, and then we wrestle theologically and deeply with the ethical issues that face us daily. In 1991, after years of theological study and discussion, the ELCA, which is the Christian denomination in which I am ordained, released a social statement regarding abortion. In the statement, "The church holds both women and the developing wife in the womb as neighbors, and we are called to love and serve our neighbors." This church declares that any person who has become unexpectedly pregnant has moral agency in what they can do. While this church longs for a future with fewer abortions every year, the social statement points out that outlawing all or nearly all abortions is not the way to do this. The ELCA poses both a total lack of regulation of abortion and legislation that would outlaw abortion in all circumstances. This church teaches that the abortion and reproductive health care, including contraception, must be legal and accessible. It also teaches that, as a society and a church, we must continually strive to mitigate the factors that make it difficult to bear, raise, and nurture children once they're born. Things like lack of affordable health care, affordable childcare, paid sick time, paid parental leave, high student debt, and compensation that is inequitable, especially based on gender or race. I share all this because it's not the church's role, nor the government's role, to legislate a particular religion's moral code onto the whole of society. Religion should be a set of beliefs that helps you to make order of the world around you, to connect you to a higher power, to help you become a better person each day, and to teach you how to love others, even those that are different from you. Religion, in theory, should be something that helps us to learn, to respect, and dialogue peacefully with other religions and people who are non-religious. Religion is not a weapon to be used to beat others into believing and acting the way that you interpret they should. Martin Luther believed that political power and authority are not to be placed in the hands of those whose exercise of that power is intended to serve religious interests. For the gospel is not served by the exercise of theocratic coercion that it would impose on society.
Thank you, Reverend. Alina Thompson.
She's got the audio. We really need audiovisual.
Alina Thompson?
Leah Thompson. Yeah. I'll keep this short and sweet. My name is Alina Thompson, I am an attorney at the ACLU of Ohio. I'm here to support these incredible activists here tonight who are fighting to protect their right to choose whether or not to have a child. Abortion is still legal in Ohio, and I want to emphasize that, it is legal all across Ohio. We are proud to fight back, and we will always stand up for reproductive justice, but I really, really want to emphasize, we stand with these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Childers.
My name is Amy Tunison, I live just outside of the city limits in Turtle Creek Township. Also got it by Amy Childers. It's confusing to even my dad. Some of you may remember me from the November 9th meeting, when I spoke about my experience as a pregnant person in Lebanon. I had to leave the meeting early and was informed afterward that a former council member addressed my comment in his closing remarks by saying that people should be aware of the city's conservative values when they move here. I think there was a listening comprehension error, because I'm from Lebanon. My family moved here in 1988, and I moved away during college, and now I'm back. I've had 34 years to get to know this community, and I know I'm not alone in my belief system. I know that this is not representative of the majority of the people who have lived here. I wanted to speak at the May 25th meeting last year, but since I do not currently live within the city limits, I thought it wasn't my place. I watched the meeting livestream, though, and was incredulous at the volume of speakers in favor of the anti-abortion ordinance who do not currently live, nor have they ever lived, in Lebanon. I re-watched and took note of exactly who spoke, and this is what I found. Forty-four people spoke in favor of the ordinance, 26 people spoke against the ordinance. It sounds like there's a clear majority of people in favor, but when I took a closer look, I found that 8% of those against the ordinance have never resided in Lebanon. Of those who spoke in favor, 11% did not provide their address, and an additional 23% of those people confirmed that they have never lived in Lebanon. When non-residents were eliminated from the equation, there was a much more even divide between those in favor of the ordinance and those against. This anti-abortion ordinance did not represent Lebanon as a whole then, and it does not represent Lebanon as a whole now. You know, when I came here in November to talk, I suggested, this is not, this is not representative of all of the people who live here, and it's really caused a bigger divide in a community that already has some bad vibes from 2020. So, again, I'm just going to say, there are some wonderful things that Corey just mentioned, things that would benefit families. Please, show an act of grace, and instead of working towards banning something, maybe provide services to people. I think it would... I think it would really help to rebuild this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Karen Kopack.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Kopack, and I live on Kriech Drive in Mason. I first like to thank some of the ladies from Lebanon who helped us in Mason. That was a fight that we had, and we were able to overturn our abortion ban. I'm here to tell you, I've got a lot of stories, but I got a quick story. My mom was born in 1923, and she, at one point, before any abortion services were available to women, she became pregnant. And my father told me this story many years later on, and he told me that he found her trying to throw herself down the stairs. And he was very, very, very upset when he told me this story because he didn't realize what women had to go through during that time, that women actually would physically try to hurt themselves in order to hide this from other people. And my point in telling that story is because abortion bans don't stop abortions. All they do is cause women to throw themselves down the stairs or do things that are dangerous to themselves and potentially leaving other children that they may have in the home. Again, I'm really, really happy that the Lebanon ladies helped us. And I'd like to just say that I heard somebody talking on the news, and it was really a poignant moment when they said that women's rights and our rights don't stop at our zip code. They just don't. And I would also like to say, I have a 23-year-old daughter whose last day of school was today, and she's a teacher. So I'm very emotional today. It's been a really hard day. And I'd like everybody to just really think about all these things and realize that we, as women and mothers, I mean, I drive a 2,000 minivan. I'm a baseball mom. Like, we want the best for everybody, but we just don't believe that cities like this should be able to make decisions for us. It's just not your business. And I'm looking at all these men in front of me, and I'm a little dumbfounded by it all, that decisions are being made for me, from people who don't know anything about my life. So I'm very thankful that we overturned our abortion ban in Mason. I'm also very thankful that we have two women that are mayor and vice mayor. And we will continue this fight. Oh, and I'd like to say to anybody here in this room that ever meets a situation, runs into a situation, if you want to arrest me, arrest me. I've got the bail, and I will help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jenny Keller.
Hi, David.
Hi.
I'm Jenny Keller. I live on Shore Drive in Mason. I'm here to tell you about the amazing women you have in your community here in Lebanon. When their rights were stripped away with almost no notice, bamboozled by elected officials in a race to see who could be the most extreme, thinking it would help them maintain and gain power, these women didn't cower. They didn't say, "Well, there's nothing I can do." Or even, "Eh, it's politics, and I don't like to talk about politics." No, they didn't do that. These brave women fought and are still fighting. And because they fought with us in Mason, we will always fight with them. These women educated us about the methods of deceit and hypocrisy here in Lebanon. And they are the reason, one of the biggest reasons, that Lebanon is the only city in Ohio with this redonculous legislation pellied by folks who don't even live here. Yeah, it did pass in Mason for a hot second because of the former mayor, I can't remember her name, who schemed with folks here in Lebanon from the get-go. Her and her cronies pushed it through despite overwhelming opposition from both sides of the aisle. That's right. People of all political persuasions and no political persuasion believe that even if they wouldn't get abortions themselves, the government shouldn't have anything to do with it. And when people's decisions are taken away, they get angry and they vote. Women of Lebanon helped us tremendously in Mason. We organized. We partnered with everyone, and we voted the extremists out. When leaders with common sense were elected, Mason's divisive law, that was truly just a political stunt that failed spectacularly, was overturned very quickly with little fanfare. Just grateful residents and businesses, they were happy to have their city back. Lebanon, you can do this too. We will support you. I ask women and allies who are sitting on the sidelines for this a simple ask: just join us. Even if you've never had an abortion, you know somebody who has had one. I've had one. Even if y'all think you and your family will never be in that situation, indeed, some of you will be. And you know in your heart of hearts, if that time ever comes, you don't want the government making decisions for you. That's discrimination based on gender and a gross manover reach by government. Thank you, women of Lebanon. We literally owe you our freedom. Women and allies, please join us. It's time to stand up and organize and vote like your rights depend on it because clearly, they definitely do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. So we're about halfway through. I just want to thank everybody for being awesome and using or being a part of these rules of decorum that you guys have been fantastic so far. Thank you. Joy Bennett.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I'm Joy Bennett, Willow Lane in Mason. Today or tomorrow is the one-year anniversary of your hastily approved abortion ban. And contrary to the promises of those who pushed sanctuary city for unborn legislation, it didn't actually, in fact, create a sanctuary city here. Instead, it created deep divisions that we've already heard about. It hurt local businesses, and it made Lebanon famous for not welcoming people of diverse viewpoints. As a resident of Mason, watching this destructive dynamic in your city energized us to resist and ultimately overturn the legislation in ours. A major concern we had in Mason, as we watched, was what kind of legal jeopardy might our city be put ourselves into if we were to adopt this? As you've recently discovered, there is legal jeopardy. You've now been sued by the ACLU, and they actually came here tonight. We managed to dodge that bullet that our former mayor put us in front of thanks to voters and constituents who stood up and voted. But I want to speak more about the real thing that we're talking about here, which is life. What's most concerning to me as a woman, as a mom, and as a concerned resident is how this kind of legislation fosters suspicion and secrecy. It might surprise you to learn that I grew up in a very conservative evangelical family, went to church multiple times a week. I had graduated from a Baptist university here in Ohio. And I saw what happened inside the church community when a woman would become pregnant outside of wedlock. They were forced to go before the entire church, confess publicly that they had sinned and were pregnant. The goal of that was shame. It was deeply traumatizing to the young woman and her family. Many people have been so wounded by that shaming kind of exercise that they left the church altogether. As I've met with people around the county, as others have mentioned, I also am running for state rep and would love to represent you and others in this county. As I've met with people, I've heard a deep concern for life, and I share that. I value life for the whole lifetime. And I know that you want to support women and encourage them ultimately to continue a pregnancy. What I'm asking you to consider is how this particular legislation may actually be working counter to that goal because it perpetuates a culture of shame and secrecy. That culture still exists, especially in our smaller communities. And there's a real stigma about being a single parent. There's a real stigma about being pregnant out of wedlock. And by initiating this law that makes it illegal to consult with someone to get advice, I believe you're perpetuating that kind of stigma. It's doing the opposite of what you intend. So just like for you to reconsider, and we can work together to support life, all of life. There's a lot of more constructive ways we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Michael Norman.
Michael Norman.
He in the back. Laura Elisi. I guess an L, yeah.
Hello. I just want to take a second of my time to, a moment of my time for the 14 children who were killed today by gun violence. My name is Laura Elisi, and I live on McClure Road. About a year ago, in this exact spot, I told you about the ordinance was intended for a lawsuit. I was told that it must be in my head. Sadly, it just wasn't that hard to predict, considering its constitutional violations. Although diapers and wipes are necessary for a very short period of a child's life, healthcare, education, food security, mental health care, affordable housing, to name a few, are more long-term needs for a child. Today, in the Ohio State House, the Ohio Pregnant Workers Fairness Act was proposed. This bill required employers to make reasonable accommodations for employees who were pregnant or breastfeeding. To show your support to pregnant individuals, this type of legislation should have been enacted to mark today. Or an ordinance protecting domestic violence survivors, sexual assault victims, an ordinance criminalizing men who impregnate women against their will. Instead of proclamation or diapers, at least you could have collected formula, which would have taken a little bit more effort and have served a greater need. Over the past year, we haven't lost our passion. Instead, what we've done, far greater than patting ourselves on the back or collecting baby wipes. We've organized, we've networked, we formed a Planned Parenthood Action Council in Warren County where Planned Parenthood was never before. We've registered voters, we promoted candidates committed to serving all of their constituents, and we've stopped this ordinance in multiple cities and states. We've also been tracking the politics and fallout of this ordinance across the country. Mark. Interestingly, some of the proponents of this ordinance are no longer in office. Big Spring Mayor just lost his election bid. Abilene City Council in Texas did not nominate candidates who brought the ordinance. Lubbock also had their council directly impacted by voters who spoke with their votes. We also remember what happened in Mason, where the shellacking, where the entire council was voted out and the ordinance repealed. Progressives did that, and we live and vote in Warren County. Unlike Mr. Matthews, who worked in other towns in Ohio and outside of ours and cities, we've had great success. The ban was stopped in multiple locations in Warren County and cities across Ohio, as well as Michigan, Nebraska, Florida, Texas, just to name a few. We also know that legal services were offered by Mr. Matthews to defend lawsuits in other cities in Ohio. All other cities declined. In fact, hundreds of cities have rejected this ban. We are thankful for the ACLU, Democracy Forward, Women Have Options, Planned Parenthood, Faith Choice Ohio, Warren County Democratic Party, multiple clergy, elected officials, as well as other organizations and policymakers who stand with us, and we are excited for what we will do in the year to come. We have just begun.
Thank you, Laura. Sam Kao.
My name's Sam Kao. I'm from Mason. Yeah, I'm a high school junior. I'd like to first start off with a story. And it's from my friend when I was collecting signatures to file for candidacy for state representative. His great aunt is Sarah Weddington, the lawyer for Roe. And in his words, "Hell will be rained if Roe overturns." "It is in our greatest endeavors that we must unite here today, and physically and metaphorically so, to combat the ever-growing malice and vices that plague us Ohioans that love, equity, and peace means to combat it with a united front." What we are witnessing now requires that united front for this is the first time that the Supreme Court, the highest in the land, has made a decision that's probably going to overturn precedent to limit civil rights rather than to expand them. What we are also witnessing is a majority court appointed by a man who still thinks he's president, wrongfully so. This court does not represent the majority consensus of our communities, Ohio, and the states. As a 17-year-old man with a mother and many friends of our 50%, I stand with you as an ally, as many of you have done the same with my community during the protests of 2020's May and during the rampant anti-Asian hate last year. With full heart, I vow to work to dismantle this patriarchy. There is no pride in being part of a privileged gender club. I don't have to worry about getting pregnant or walking home at night. It's still something I'm learning every day from my female friends. I'm fighting against the SCOTUS decision, not just because it's inconvenient and unrealistic, but also because it's immoral. Overturning Roe v. Wade is wrong. If we don't stand for the protection of all our communities, including the most vulnerable, we will have nothing to stand for. To those loitering still by the sidelines, there is nothing pro-life about calling rape an opportunity or unwanted pregnancy a gift. They will come for you next, and all the defenders before you will vanish. They'll go after gay marriage, they'll go after interracial marriage. Do not let this be the first domino to topple. The greatest privilege as a state representative candidate, and I have to emphasize that, is that we can exercise is our right to vote and our right to assembly. To these so-called pro-lifers, what you have opened is beyond a can of worms, but a force, a wave that can send ripples of hope that can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression. This is a voice of protest to injustice. We have seen that same voice in 1919, in 1964, and now again in 2022. This year calls for us to look beyond ourselves, especially the privileged gender, and vote as if your right to body autonomy is being directly threatened. Vote with the thought in mind that what you want to see for a future is one where you don't have to worry about your daughters and fellow sisters and mothers and grandmothers. And again, don't think they'll stop after this. They'll be out for more blood. You can't stop abortions. You can only stop safe abortions. Good night.
Thanks, Sam. Anita Heck. Anita Burton Heck.
Hello, how are you this evening? My name's Anita. I live at 1041 Country Creek Drive, right here in Lebanon. And I'm coming here in front of you today to say I'm tired, you know? Aren't we all kind of tired of all of this contention? You know, the divisiveness, et cetera, et cetera. It wears on a people. It really does. People who like to walk down the street and wave to us. Now, there's always this tension under the surface, and I think we can do better. I'm tired of being upset. I'm tired of watching poor behavior online. Some of the things I've witnessed just this week, shameful, really is. And also in person. I'm tired of people's unwillingness to consider others' circumstances and point of view. We don't all look the same. We just don't, right? And having, you know, that feels good, so I'll go ahead and do it mentality. I really do think we can do better. These actions and reactions percolate under the very foundation of our town, leaving us dysfunctional, divided, and unable to progress. Feel stuck. We must do better. And when I say we, I point to myself when I say that because anger gets us nowhere, right? The sanctuary city, this is my opinion. I think this legislation was outside the jurisdiction of our city council. I think it was rushed, right? On emergency basis. I think opposing opinions went pretty much unheard, on deaf ears. I think legalities were not considered. The result is a divided community facing an expensive legal battle. And as a taxpayer, that upsets me. It is important to not make this mistake again. Council and community, we must find common ground. Important. That space where we agree and can move forward. It always exists, even with hard issues. Talk, listen, and listen again. Listen to views unlike yours. Council, you're obligated as leaders to represent all of us, not just those whose opinions match yours. It's easy to roll over the competition, but it's harder to compromise and find long-lasting solutions. Community, write our leaders and express your opinions. We can each do that. And vote. I certainly hope we can heal this divide. I certainly hope we can heal this divide, because Lebanon, my home of over 22 years, feels a bit foreign right now and unwelcoming. And that makes me deeply sad. I hope we can all be a part of the solution. And I want to dip my hat to Mike Cope, who came to the Community Conversations Workshop. That was sponsored by the city. Thank you, Scott, for doing that. And in one point, he said, "I'm here because I just want to understand." And I said, "I applaud that, and I appreciate it, and I see you, Mike Cope. Thank you."
Thank you, Anita. Leslie Nahigan.
Good evening, council. My name is Leslie Nahigan. I live at 517 Heritage Streets. I'm an 18-year resident of Lebanon, and I am the chair of the Warren County Action Council of Planned Parenthood. There's been considerable buzz about tonight's meeting, with much being said about Lebanon being a conservative town. I'd offer Lebanon is no different in this respect from any other city. It's about as conservative as Harper Valley, that fictitious city that that movie was filmed here. I challenge council members to peek outside their echo chambers and represent all of Lebanon, all of us. Much has been said by council members to press about family values. What would those include? Mercy? Grace? Love? Truth? Service to others? We share those. And in my family, self-determination and bodily autonomy are also highly regarded. Reproductive decisions belong there in families, not in council chambers, not in abortion bans. We warned council that this overreach on abortion rights would lead to a lawsuit. You proceeded anyway, exposing city taxpayers to the cost of defense and any potential damages. Again, that's the second time. These are your tax dollars, folks. I do thank you, though. You gave us quite a kick in the fanny. Your wake-up call brought us not one, but two ACLU billboards in Warren County reminding us that abortion is still legal in Ohio. Lessons learned here in Lebanon, as you've heard tonight, serve to head off similar bans in other Warren County cities. Very proud of ladies of Mason. We will hold the line here. We formed the Planned Parenthood Action Council of Warren County. It is vibrant, strong, and skilled. Our group is a national resource, helping not just Ohio cities, but those in Florida, Michigan, Nebraska, and elsewhere. And we have a legal challenge to a sloppy piece of legislation. We thank the ACLU and Democracy Forward for standing up for our First Amendment and due process rights. This does not hinge on Roe. Clear First Amendment issue. And we thank the National Association of Social Workers and Women Have Options for standing up for those in need of healthcare services, and abortion is healthcare. We who stand for reproductive choice and access will not back down. Just as I pledged last year following passage of the ban, I will assist any person in need of informational resources to make their decisions or to access care. Here's to family values: mercy, love, grace, service to others.
Thank you, Leslie. Alicia Lipton.
Good evening, gentlemen and madam councilmembers. Sorry about that. I spoke to you a year ago, and a year ago, I told you you were wrong. And I'm here again today to tell you that you're wrong. Right now, abortion is legal, not only in the state of Ohio, but it's also legal in the United States. You are elected officials to a very small city. You do not have the right to go and make laws against federal government. In all the other cities, we've had comments and commentary back from their city attorney, talking about whether or not it's legally sound. This would be the holdout. We've not heard from our city attorney, Mark Yurich. My belief is silence is golden sometimes. He probably, he's an attorney, he's a smart man, he probably knows what you did is not just. And that will come out in the lawsuits. It's amazing to me that a year ago, I had to come and speak and fight for the same things that my great-great-grandmother had to fight for. I have four daughters who are also fighting for that now. And that, quite honestly, is disgusting. It's disgusting that a group of white men are standing in front of us telling us what we can do with our body or what we can do with our uterus. I seriously doubt any of you would appreciate it if we lined you all up and said, "It's vasectomy day, and guess what? You're all getting clipped." I don't think that would go over well. Well, while I am here tonight, I do want to read something. We have several state, local officials that are supporting us, and I'm proud to stand here tonight with my sisters, my friends, and allies. I do have a message, and it is from the mayor of Cincinnati, Avtav Pirov. He was planning on being here tonight, but unfortunately duty calls, and he is in Washington, DC. So I will read Mayor Pirov's statement. "To the people of Lebanon, here today to stand up for freedom, for healthcare, for basic human rights, and to the friends, neighbors, and allies who have joined this rally, because you know we're all in this fight together. Thank you for showing up as the embodiment of something we all understand, something that we are going to make sure everyone understands, that no one can strip away reproductive freedom without guaranteeing a unified, passionate, and never-ending battle from those of us who defend human rights. A year ago tomorrow, a handful of people," yes, just a handful, our Lebanon City Council, "sat in a room and decided to reject the rights of women in Lebanon, to suppress them, and because of that decision, by a handful of people, lives are at stake. You are all well aware that reproductive freedom isn't just under attack here in Lebanon. At the highest court in the land, a handful of people are trying to take it away. In our state legislature, Republican representatives are trying to take this away. But these leaders don't know what we know, that you are never, that we are never backing down.
Thank you, Alicia.
We stand in this together as long as it takes."
I'm going to say Greg Lansman. Is that right? Greg Lansman?
Greg Lansman?
Susie Lertsman?
Lertsman.
Lertsman.
Good evening, lady and gentleman. Appreciate the option that you give your constituents to talk. I'm not a constituent of yours. I'm from Mason, but I have a uterus, so I have a right to talk. First thing I have to say is your hand sanitizer doesn't have enough alcohol in it to kill bacteria, so you might want to switch that out. There's a couple of things in here that I think are problems. The first one is that when people are voting for laws like you've passed, 99% of them quote "God" or "The Bible" or "The Church" as reasons behind it. Church, state, different. You, anyone, including me, does not have the right to legislate your religious views onto my body. Not my church, not my religion. My religion says abortion's okay if it's really necessary. You can tell I kind of get up in arms about that. The other thing that I have a problem with, well, one of the other things, is that by enacting laws like these, you're treating women like chattel, same as slaves used to be. You're saying, "We do not have the right to make decisions about ourselves." You're probably saying, whether you know it or not, "You're, you just don't know. We know better." That's not the case. As a woman at 18, I could have gone to war. I could have defended this country in that way. I would not, with your laws, have the right to end a pregnancy that I did not want, that may have been the result of rape or incest. And yes, I have been raped not once, but twice. I was overpowered by two men. If you're being held down, there's nothing you can do. You can make it right. You can give me autonomy over my own body. Until you have a uterus, just back off a little bit. Think that women actually know what they're talking about. Thank you.
Thanks, Susie.
Oh, sorry. I'm from Mason.
And not enough alcohol. We got that. Get that changed out. Lauren Simpson.
Although I do not live in Lebanon, I live in Oregonia. I'm the mother of three daughters that attend Lebanon School, or two now that formerly attended. Shame on you. Shame on all of you. You are not representing all of your constituents. Some of us cannot vote for you in or out because we live outside city limits, but we're still affected by your tyranny, and that's what it is. If you truly believed that, that this was the will of the people, you could have made it a democratic vote, but you didn't. You kept this under the radar, and you passed it in the shadows. Shame on you all. Focus on the born. As a pediatric nurse, I see the worst of the worst. I love children more than any of you can imagine. I have made it my life. We see the children that are mistreated, and it's normally by unsupported mothers. These are moms that had no other choice, because you know what? If they don't go to work, they're going to be harassed for being on welfare. If they do go to work and they leave their child with a boyfriend or someone who's not well-equipped and doesn't have the tools, we end up with shaken babies in the emergency room. This decision of Lebanon will impact the pediatric hospitals in Cincinnati, Liberty. If this is not my body, who does it belong to? Does it belong to you? Is this body yours? Who does this body belong to? And I'm here to tell you, if you cannot trust a woman with a choice, how can you trust her with a child? Our foster care system's overrun. And it's not just that, it's not just, you know, having this child. The foster system is overrun because these women are ill-equipped to carry that child for even nine months. The support is not there. Focus on the born. You guys are not focused, like, and that's why there's many ways to prevent abortion. I think abortion is sad. I mean, I'm right there with you. Like, I wish that every child could be a wanted child. And I, you know, I hate these people that cause baby killers and all this stuff. That is not what this is. I want every child to be a wanted and loved child. And you can prevent abortions by having Planned Parenthood with adequate birth control in your community. That is a known way to bring, education of women in particular is the key way to bring pregnancies down, unwanted pregnancies down. So why would you put a ban that that couldn't be in Lebanon? That should be what you want, to prevent unwanted pregnancies. So when I was thinking about why you would have done this, because I know you're not hateful people, like, you know, you want the best for children. We all want the best for children in this community, I would hope. So why, why? Why the assault on women? This is an assault on women's bodies because there's other ways to prevent abortion. Every man in this room has the capability to not spread his seed. That's in your hand. You can prevent-
Teach your sons.
What was that?
Teach your sons.
Yeah, I mean, teach your sons. And, you know, if you're going to have some sort of ordinance in Lebanon, why isn't it that every young male of childbearing potential carries a condom in his wallet unless expressly written, you know, a contract from his lover? There was other ways to do this, but the way you did it was an assault on women. Shame on you, shame on you that have daughters, and shame on you for not representing the will of the people in this country.
Lauren, can you make your final comments, please?
Okay, 40%, less than 40% of Americans believe that Roe v. Wade should be overturned. So basically, our government's been hijacked, and you're part of it.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, we're almost through this. We can do this. We got four left. You guys have been amazing, so thank you for that. Mackenzie Morrow.
My name is Mackenzie Morrow. I live in Centerville, Ohio, and I'm here to speak on behalf of abortion bans. The entire question of if abortion should be outlawed is defined through the question, "When does the soul enter the body?" This is a religious question, and this question will have religious answers, all of which are perfectly valid and reasonable. However, what is not valid or reasonable is for a government to exercise religious control. We can even see how much religion is already involved in our government, given the fact that before this city council meeting started, we were led in a Christian prayer. This clearly shows us there was already religion involved in the government. Why are we going to need even more? Democracy has always been based upon a separation of church and state. If laws are passed according to a religion, we are not living in a democracy, we are living in a theocracy. This growing trend of authoritarianism, this government control, is something that no one should stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Womack?
Hi, my name is Julie Womack. I live in Mason as well. So I just wanted to say that you all really prepared us for what happened in Mason and gave us amazing allies, because you guys pushed this ban through so fast, you pissed off so many people up here, that they were all over us in Mason, helping us, and they were a tremendous help. I think someone just said this, "The majority of the country, by a long shot, does not want to see Roe versus Wade overturned." And from what I'm hearing tonight, the sentiment is far more on this side of the room than it is on this side of the room. So what your other speaker said about the emails and the exchanges during the passage of this bill seems to me that, I'm not sure this really is representing your community. But what I do know is, like I said, majority of the country does not want to see Roe versus Wade overturned. And we showed that in Mason, because if you remember our election results, we voted out the two council members who passed that ban, and they lost by big numbers and came in dead last, the last two. So I think that that shows what this country and what the city and what this area really stands for. I have a daughter at Ohio State, so if Roe is overturned and our state legislature passes the bills that they're planning to pass, just like you guys passed this abortion ban, I now have to worry that if she's sexually assaulted, that not only will she have to go through that trauma, but she's going to have to carry a baby to term and be traumatized over and over again during that entire period, because a bunch of predominantly men at our state house are going to tell her that that's what she has to do. What she said to me a couple days ago actually kind of chilled me. She said, "Mom, I'm not even sure I want to have kids in the future." And I said, "Why?" And she said, "Because as a woman in this country, it's too risky." She's like, "I don't have control over my body." She goes, "If I have, I want to have kids. I have, I get pregnant." She goes, "If I have, I want to have kids. I have, I get pregnant. I have a miscarriage. Am I not gonna be hounded to see whether it was really a miscarriage or did I have an abortion? If Ohio passes a Texas-style bill with a bounty, is she gonna be sued by that next-door neighbor who says, 'Oh, she was pregnant, but now she's not.' I'm gonna go get that $10,000 or sue her husband because maybe he helped her with an abortion." That's where she's headed. Or she's worried, like, if she just has a health issue. Because you know what? Being pregnant is not necessarily like a safety-free thing. You have lots of problems when you're pregnant. There are health risks. There are death risks being pregnant. If she has one of those risks, if she maybe needs an abortion for valid health reasons, now she has to worry that her doctor may not recommend that because the doctor could be prosecuted. Is the doctor gonna be thinking in her best interest? This is where we are headed. My kid does not even want to maybe have children because she worries about that. And I guess I just, last thing I want to say was that I just find it very, very interesting that today of all days is the day that you guys decided to make it a pro-life day. There were 15 people killed in Texas today. 14 kids. I saw the news, and now they're saying 18, so I don't know what it actually is. But politicians who mandate government pregnancy, elected officials like you all, elected officials at our state houses, are the same people who refuse to pass common sense gun violence prevention. Refuse. So I'm just gonna say, your proclamation said every child has a right to life. Yes, what you said in the proclamation. Well, then I hope your next action is a resolution to the state house asking them to pass some common sense gun violence prevention. And if you don't do that, then this is, this is kind of hypocrisy about your pro-life stance.
Thank you, Julie.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. My name is Liza Sizemore. I live at 511 North Broadway here in Lebanon. And here today, on the one-year anniversary of city council passing ordinance number 2021-053, to ask that current council not only make ordinances that are not enforced or proclamations, but to take visible and tangible action to save the lives of newborns. As councils proclaimed May 25th to be pro-life day in the city of Lebanon, Ohio, I am asking council to consider and approve the installation of a safe haven baby box at the new fire station on North Broadway. Many residents may not know this, but Ohio is one of only nine states. Today was legislation passed to allow for safe haven baby box placement. Safe haven baby boxes provide anonymous options for parents to safely surrender their infant. Illegal abandonments show us that mothers are seeking to keep their identity secret. As many of these women are in crisis. They want and need anonymity when surrendering an infant, either because of fear of being recognized, the stigma associated with surrender, or fear of prosecution due to the lack of knowledge and misunderstanding of Ohio's safe haven law. The team at Safe Haven Baby Boxes hopes and prays for a face-to-face surrender as it benefits both the mother and the infant. Installing a baby box is more than just having a box. By having a box in our community, it would enable us to educate about the law and the Safe Haven Baby Hotline that is staffed 24/7, which provides counseling to women in crisis and only suggests the baby box when it is the last option. The goal of Safe Haven Baby Boxes is to rewrite the story and give mothers and innocent infants a better chance. Through this, infants would go through a closed adoption and parents would be free from prosecution. Why it's important for our community to take action for this? First, it demonstrates this community's leaders' commitment to protecting all life. Secondly, the nearest Safe Haven Baby Boxes are nearly an hour away in the southwest side of Cincinnati or in northern Kentucky. And having this would provide the women of Lebanon, Warren County, and beyond another closer, safe option for their babies. And just one example of how crucial these boxes are. In one box located in the city of Carmel, Indiana, there have been three babies safely surrendered in just the last six weeks. No more babies left in dumpsters, no more babies buried in backyards. The typical cost for this installation of a safe haven baby box is $16,000 in the state of Ohio. I have sent an info packet accidentally twice, I'm sorry, to all of you on council, Mr. Yuric, Mr. Brunk, Fire Chief Johnson, and Chief Mitchell, to review. And I'm asking that council put this on the agenda for the next work session and, uh, and to review and determine next steps. And I am happy to support this cause in partnership with the city and the Safe Haven Baby Team and anyone else in the community who would like to take up this cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Liza. I, I'm gonna, yeah, Scott, could we, I'm gonna take a break.
Can we get an update on that?
I'm gonna give you an update right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the, the city has entered into a lease agreement with Safe Haven Baby Box, and it's in production right now.
Excellent.
So should be installed.
It's all behind the curve.
Yeah, so it's, uh, should be installed within, I think they estimated six weeks.
Six weeks. Excellent. Thank you.
That was good clapping. That was great.
Good to be back. My name is Markley Dixon, director with Right to Life of East Texas, founder of the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative, and the only named non-government actor in the lawsuit over the Texas Heartbeat Act, which went before the Supreme Court of the United States. This time last year, y'all were in a situation where you are looking at an ordinance which was very similar to one passed in Texas. You guys were the 29th city in the nation to pass an ordinance outlawing abortion. And y'all knew that seven cities in Texas had been sued by the ACLU and that a lawsuit against them lasted only three months. The cities prevailed, and abortion remained banned in those seven cities that were sued. Y'all also knew that on May 17th, the city of Lubbock had been sued. And when y'all were passing the ordinance, y'all were confident that this would survive. And on June 1st, just not too much longer after you guys passed the ordinance, we won in Lubbock against the ACLU there. And so every challenge that the ACLU has brought against the sanctuary city ordinances, they've lost. And abortion remains banned in Lubbock, Texas. No abortions have been performed by Planned Parenthood in Lubbock since June 1st, when the ordinance went into effect. Now, there are 50 cities across the United States that passed similar ordinances outlawing abortion. And we've even seen, with the Texas Heartbeat Act that these sanctuary cities led up to, we saw victory in that before the Supreme Court of the United States, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, and the Texas Supreme Court. I am fully confident that the ordinance that y'all have before you that has been in, in effect for about a year now will survive legal challenges and will be able to say, in the near future, just like the other cities, just like the seven cities in East Texas, just like Lubbock, that Lebanon, Ohio, too, has gained victory over the ACLU. I thank you guys so much for y'all's commitment to life. And y'all have been inspiration to so many people across the United States. I was just talking with a lawyer from California, who actually was in a movie that was filmed here, I have to say. And she was saying how proud she was of Lubbock in Ohio. Guys, you guys have all America behind you. Thank you guys so much. God bless.
Thank you, Mark. All right, that wraps it up for recognition of visitors. And we are going into public hearings. So we have to bring the screen down and turn on the projector. So if you guys want to go to the restroom or go drink the water, you're more than welcome. We got a couple minutes here. Yeah, a little stretch break? All right, welcome back. We are going to move into a public hearing pertaining to amendments to the zoning code regarding short-term rentals and the creation of a central residential district.
Your honor, if I might, we would need a motion to move into a public hearing. We're actually going to hear both of these at the same time because they're interrelated. The first public hearing is amendments to the zoning code relating short-term rentals and the creation of a central residential district, and also considering a map amendment rezoning certain properties from R1U, excuse me, to central residential district.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Burke? Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Scott?
Thank you. We'll start with a few slides on the map amendment. So the purpose is to rezone properties that are adjacent to our existing downtown district from Residential 1 Urban or R1U to a new district, which is the Central Residential District or the CRD. This has been, this was a recommendation by the recently approved Envision Lebanon Comprehensive Plan. The, the subject properties are really a mix of residential. There's some institutional buildings, offices, churches. So really, this area kind of has the flavor of downtown without kind of that core business-type district. So just a little bit of background. Before this, you know, rezoning request even went to planning commission, the city did conduct a public meeting with the impacted property owners on March 9th, 2022, just to get their feedback. For the most part, feedback was positive. There was some folks adjacent or kind of within the subject properties who had concerns about some of the aspects of a central business district zoning. So at the time, we were looking at actually expanding the central business district. There was some concern over some of the uses in the CBD that are permitted, such as bars. I think generally speaking, the residents were very supportive of, you know, the less intense uses like offices and short-term rentals. So what that did is that kind of led staff to create a new zoning designation, which is the Central Residential District. And what the CRD district will do, will conditionally permit many of the uses that the property owners liked, like offices, while still allowing for residential-type use. But it does eliminate some of the less desirable uses like bars that are permitted in our central business district. As it relates to short-term rentals, because this was another topic of, of a meeting with the residents, the new Central Residential District could allow non-owner-occupied short-term rentals with specific regulations to operate in this area. So like our central business district, which does permit short-term rentals to operate, they would be permitted within the new CRD district as a conditional use. And we'll get into the, kind of the short-term rental tax amendments in a little bit. So this is kind of straight out of the comprehensive plan. You can see the slide on the right. Kind of the pink area is our existing central business district area. The, the map on the left that you see in kind of purple, that's what was recommended in our comprehensive plan as a expansion to our central business district. Ultimately, the boundaries, the properties that have kind of that dark black boundary, those are what are being proposed for the new central residential district to kind of provide a transition from our core bar downtown as you kind of get out into the more residential areas. This is just kind of another shot. Again, the, the properties that are bounded by the green line is what would be rezoned to the CRD. We have received quite a bit of public input. This has changed, you know, over the last few months, based on public input. But this is kind of where we're at right now in terms of the actual boundaries of the new CRD. Again, kind of an aerial view that shows. It's primarily kind of along that North Mechanic Street corridor, east of, you know, kind of Mechanic Street as you head out towards East Street, and then a smaller area off of West Main Street. Okay, now we'll kind of transition into the proposed tax amendments. These focus on short-term rental regulations. Currently, short-term rentals are permitted within the central business district. They are not permitted in the residential district. What the proposed amendments would have... What the proposed amendments would establish is allowing short-term rentals in the central business district and this newly designated central residential district. That would be permitted for both owner occupied and non-owner occupied properties. They would be subject to specific conditions that have been outlined. When you look at properties then that are outside of the central business district or the central residential district to operate a short-term rental in those areas, it would have to be owner occupied. And again, subject to specific conditions that are outlined. I do want to highlight that the proposed tax amendments would allow for owner occupied properties to be used, the entire house or the entire property to be used for short-term rentals up to 90 days a year. Planning Commission did recommend removing that, so that will be, you know, consideration for city council, whether or not you want to keep that in there, but that was the one change that Planning Commission did recommend as they heard the text amendments. If you own the property and you're in a residential district, you can rent out a single room or a single floor throughout the year. That would be considered hosted. Like I said, there are U-specific regulations associated with the short-term rentals. It's permitted to, it's prohibited to remodel or structurally alter a building that would prevent the structure from being used as a residence in the future or that would make it appear less residential. For example, the installation of more parking spaces, setbacks, commercial type exterior lighting. New homes shall not be constructed that are primarily intended for rental to short-term guests. Short-term rentals of single-family structures that were considered, constructed less than five years prior to the date of the application for an STR permit shall be prohibited. And in multi-family buildings, no more than 25% of the units can be used as short-term rentals. Staff did go through the text amendment review criteria and staff is recommending the proposed amendments and find them to be consistent with all of the zoning code criteria as well as the recommendations and policies in the comprehensive plan. So again, planning commission's recommendations were to approve the new central residential district and the map amendment as well as the short-term rental tax amendments. The only difference would be that they did recommend removing the full property, short-term rental period of 90 days that is currently in the, in the provisions. And that's all I have, Mayor.
So at this time, I would invite anyone who'd like to come up and speak to these, these amendments and state your name and your address and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. Seeing none, is there anything from the council that we would like to go over here?
I would like to clarify that striking the 90-day limitation would mean there's no limitation, correct?
Yes, that's a, I, I, I voted no on this. I like having the, the 90 days in there just as a, as a way for the city to, to address a property owner if needed. So I am fine with that provision and I think it, it represents the collective of what we talked about as a community. So I'd be, I'd be on board for keeping that.
The public hearing was great. It was good, it was good to hear from real estate owners, folks that lived in town that were concerned about, they just wanted to have their voice heard. And we have, we don't have that hotel yet that we, we would love to have. So this is a great way for, for, for tourism to come in and, or tourists to come into our town and, and enjoy a, a weekend or, or an evening or however long they want to stay. I do like the 90 days as well, so I would be in support of that.
And that's how, that's how it is written, written before you right now.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. Regular items. Ordinance number 2022-068.
Ordinance number 2022-068 extending a moratorium for a period of 120 days in the granting of new permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of medical marijuana within the city of Lebanon and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance opposes a four-month moratorium on new permits for medical marijuana, retail, medical marijuana, retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors. This is an extension of a previous moratorium passed on January 11th, 2022 to allow the city more time to review and make recommendations for the zoning code, which will conform to the city's goals.
Can I get a motion to adopt, please? So moved.
Second.
Any comments from council here? Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Previous business, ordinance number 2022-058.
Ordinance number 2022-058 approving amendments to the zoning code text as it relates to regulating medical marijuana. Your honor, if I might suggest to council at this point, given the moratorium that's in place and given the uncertainty about how council will eventually come out on these issues, that probably the, the most appropriate thing to do would be a motion to postpone this to an indefinite date or a motion to table.
I motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments on that?
I think that the speakers tonight that did speak about the desire to not allow cultivation were spot on and I look forward to continued discussion about it.
I as well. I think I've made, along with Mr. Cope and Mr. Norris, we've made our opinions pretty clear on that and, but I'm willing to extend more time for, for folks that want to research this more and hear more comment and so on and so forth.
Want to thank the board for their willingness to extend this so members can research more. And Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-059.
Ordinance number 2022-059 approving the purchase of deicing road salt from Cargo Inc. Deicing technology as bid by the Warren County Engineers Office Salt Purchasing Co-op Program.
This ordinance authorizes the purchase of road salt at the cost of $89.05 per ton from Cargo Incorporated deicing technology for the 2022 through 2023 season.
Do I have a motion? Where are we at here?
To approve.
To approve. Yes. So moved.
Second.
Any comments here? Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
New business, ordinance number 2022-062.
Ordinance number 2022-062 approving amendments to the zoning code text as recommended by the planning commission as it relates to regulating short-term rentals and establishing a central residential zoning district.
This ordinance approves amendments to the zoning code to regulate short-term rentals in residential districts, including short-term rental U-specific regulations, as well as establishing a new central residential district as recommended by the planning commission.
Can I get a motion for a first read?
So moved. Second.
Miss, oh, we don't need to do that. Ordinance number 2022-063.
Ordinance number 2022-063 approving, approving a map amendment as recommended by the planning commission to rezone certain properties from R1, RIU to Central Residential District or CRD.
This ordinance modifies the zoning map to rezone properties located at New Street and North Mechanic, Warren Street and Cherry Street, as well as West Silver and West Main Street from Residential One Urban or R1U to Central Residential District as recommended by planning commission.
Can I get a motion for first read?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2022-064.
Ordinance number 2022-064 approving Pratt Final Platte, which establishes right-of-way along Orchard Avenue as recommended by the planning commission and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the final platte combining two parcels located at 147 East Orchard Avenue, creating a single lot of record and establishing right-of-way and utility easements along Orchard Avenue as required by the Warren County Map Room.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments here? Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-065.
Ordinance number 2022-065 approving a construction contract with KT Supply in the amount of $138,800, I'm sorry, $138,807 for the construction of a cul-de-sac on Grant Drive and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the construction contract for a new cul-de-sac on Grant Drive that was part of the property exchange agreement with Ficon to allow the construction of the city's Columbia Road Santeri Booster Station. The cul-de-sac will support the integration of two separate properties currently owned and utilized by Ficon for their manufacturing operation.
Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this, comments?
No question. I just think a good example of the city working together with manufacturing and folks, city staff did a great job making it happen.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance number 2022-066.
Ordinance number 2022-066.
We need to vote on the last one, I believe. I just want to make sure.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's a, that was 65, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that needs a vote, sorry.
My bad, I just.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Now, ordinance number 2022-066.
Ordinance number 2022-066 approving the redemption of $1,765,000 of road improvement bonds and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the redemption of $1,765,000 of road improvement bonds to be paid utilizing available funds held in the city's general fund as budgeted for in the 2022 operating budget.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-067.
Ordinance number 2022-067 establishing an energy special improvement district fund and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the establishment of an energy special improvement district fund to allow for tracking the related revenue and expenses of a new program that permits the property owner to finance the cost of the approved project by imposing a special assessment on their property taxes. So this is essentially a pass-through fund where the, the city receives money from the county for an assessment that the property owners agreed to and then we distribute it.
That's a, that's a cool vehicle for companies to use. Can I get a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions on this?
I have one. How, how do businesses, are they aware of this? How are they? Cause I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, any, anytime, anytime city staff is talking to businesses about any sort of innovation or expansion, we make them aware. Also, Warren County Port Authority was kind of instrumental in this and a lot of times those businesses are connected with them as well for financing. So we definitely have that in our toolbox in terms of the various incentives that we communicate to businesses. It's usually, you know, on more of a larger scale because it involves, you know, financing.
I was going to ask, is there a size of a business that, kind of small business, that they want to switch out one of the older buildings, switch out the LED?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would depend on the size of the project, I think, to where it would actually be economical because there are some financing costs associated with it, but we can always have that conversation with any business that wants to take a look at it. Because there's no, I, I don't believe there's any sort of minimum threshold that you have to meet to take advantage of the program.
Would a, I remember when Lebanon was switching their lights out, the Lebanon schools were switching from Alagen to LED, would a school system be eligible for something like that?
With it being property tax related, yeah, I think they, yeah, because cities can do it as well, so yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure probably most, most of them are new schools now they have, but there's other entities out there that, like a church or, they may want to benefit from reduced electrical use.
Yeah, absolutely. We've had a couple, it's relatively new, so it's only been in place for about a year, but we have had a couple take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Give it a first and second. I think either. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
We, we need motions, sorry. Do we have it?
We did. We can do it again.
I'm off one. Sorry, I was looking ahead. Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-069.
Resolution number 2022-069 appointing Isaac Wiles Burkholder LLC to represent the city of Lebanon, Ohio regarding a civil complaint brought against the city and various officials and declaring an emergency.
This resolution approves the appointment of Isaac Wills and Burkholder LLC to represent the city of Lebanon, Ohio regarding a civil complaint brought against the city and various officials by the National Association of Social Workers and Women Have Options Incorporated related to legislation declaring the city of Lebanon a sanctuary city of the unborn.
And Mayor, if I might, your honor, an attorney named Jonathan Mitchell, who is a former Solicitor General from the state of Texas, is also going to be working closely with the city. All of these lawsuits are fairly complicated. Deciding who's, who's best to represent the city's interests in a given case involves a pretty complicated and sophisticated weighing of a number of factors from who the claim it is, what the claims are, what jurisdiction the claim was filed in, et cetera. So it's my opinion, my recommendation that council vote favor this resolution so that we have enough legal help. We did have a telephone conference last week. The city was represented by an attorney named Mr. Pickens from Isaac Wile, Jonathan Mitchell and myself. The ACOU had a lawyer's on the call, so I think it's safe to say that they're fairly mobilized on this and I just want to make sure that the city within reason gets the absolute best defense that it can, it can obtain.
Thank you for that. Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions here?
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
Mr. Yurik, if, if the Supreme Court rules in June or July against Roe, does that change anything with this lawsuit?
Yeah, it'll change it dramatically, I think. I mean, I think it's likely that it would because my understanding is that the General Assembly and some of the people sitting here in the audience may know more about this than I do, but my understanding is the General Assembly is poised to, to pass legislation regarding this. And if, assuming that legislation is what you would call a, a law of general application or a statewide law, while our ordinance would be, it could still remain on the books, it's, it's highly likely that it would be superseded in most instances by the state law.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-070.
Ordinance number 2022-070 authorizing the city manager to execute a settlement agreement. Hooray! A mutual release with the Campbell-Burling Development Company LLC and CB Lebanon LLC and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the execution of a settlement agreement between the city of Lebanon and Campbell-Burling Development Company LLC to resolve a dispute about the type of backfill required for sanitary sewer infrastructure beneath roadways.
Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments here? Mr. Burke, please call the roll. Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope? Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Yurk, for your work on that. Discussion items and city manager's report.
The only thing I have is there's no meeting of city council next week, so we'll be back the first week in June with the work session.
Cool. No executive session, right, Mark?
That's correct, Your Honor.
All right, we will move into council items. Mr. Sellers, you got anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm honored, I'm really proud and honored to be with my fellow council members here today, and some former council members that were in these chambers as well. Anybody who knows me knows my passion for the cornerstone principles of self-determination, self-government, and liberty. And with proper freedom only comes with limited government. However, one of those roles of government is to protect its, protect its citizens within the community. So it is the local authorities who are responsible for the, to protect the citizens from violence, no matter the age, race, or creed, especially ones, especially ones that can't defend themselves. So, you know, I'm really proud to be a part of this. I'm proud of my fellow council members, and I'm proud to say that May 25th is Pro-Life Day in Lebanon, Ohio. And I also want to make a quick comment on, it was brought up several times tonight, that, you know, there were other cities, local cities, that made quote-unquote "statements" on their sanctuary city as far as electing them out of office. I also want to remind people that Lebanon, the City of Lebanon, had an election in 2021, and they also made their statement. That's all I got.
Amen.
Mr. Lamro?
Yeah, a couple things I wanted to say. Excited to hear about the baby box. I can't, I can't remember if I said this or not, and it's late, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but my grandmother was dropped off at a doorstep back in the early twenties, so I don't know if baby boxes existed back then, because I went alive, but I think it's just, it's cool that we have that. Thank you for the previous council for taking a stand and having courage to do the right thing, and then, I just respect your leadership, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. That's all I got. To the Norris report.
Today, I filled a page with notes. I wasn't sure if I was at a Mason council meeting or Lebanon council meeting.
We read a Lebanon council meeting, sir.
I got, I'm old and I got tired, so I was like, where am I? I agree with, and I'll keep this brief, there were so many things that were, that were said tonight, and it is difficult when you feel very strongly about something to hear, whether you're for abortion or against abortion, or really whatever is going on in life right now, when your, when your principles you feel are being stretched or attacked to, to not want to verbally defend yourself or at least, you know, make comment, but so to sit here for two hours was very difficult for me. It's difficult for me to sit quiet for two minutes, let alone two hours. But one of the, one of the lines that, I don't remember what, and some of those speakers were so well-spoken, I was just like, wow, I wish I could speak like that, they were, especially the young ones, they just really were able to talk. But they, they made a comment and said they want to stand for the most vulnerable, and I thought that was interesting, because I, and I don't know who they were talking about at that time, because it was a, it was a pro-abortion individual that was speaking that, because I'm like, that's exactly what we're doing here tonight, is we're standing for the most vulnerable. Abortion is an awful thing, an unwanted pregnancy is an awful thing, there's choice that goes in in most cases prior to that, so better choices need to be made, we're all, and that came out clear tonight, too. But I think what I felt a lot of tonight was, a year ago, when this council that was up here stood and made this decision, they knew the risks, they knew the bombardment that they were going to get. I was very proud of them then, and I was really proud of them now. And when Amy spoke, I've heard Amy speak many times, but tonight, I was just so proud of her, she was dead on, and whatever, regardless of your feelings about Amy Brewer, tonight she was queen, she, she just said it so well, and I was so proud to be a part of Lebanon. We are a unique community, we're not Mason, we're not anybody else, we're Lebanon, and we have principles, and we have things that we stand on, and as Matt said, my fellow councilmen, they voted, you all voted a few months ago, and here we sit, and you all knew our principles, you all knew where we stood, you all knew what our value system was. It was very, very clear, not one of us backed down from the support. So, I want to thank those that were also here in support of us tonight, and your smiles and your prayers were well, well, well-felt, and I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Matthews?
I do want to recognize that it's, the shooting in Texas is an atrocity. A young man with illegally obtained guns, shooting down second to fourth graders. I'm grateful for the border patrol agent that eliminated the threat, but that's still something atrocious when there's two days left of school down there. Here, I happen to be walking around Mulberry Street, and all the, all the, our kids were having the last day of school, and they were so happy going to all the shops, and it was great, and to have that type of shadow is heartbreaking, it really is. I want to echo the gratitude I have for the leadership shown. We have Mr. Schaefer here with some of his children, had a great haircut, and Mayor, Mayor Brewer, tonight, they couldn't be here, former members Monroe and Shope. Leadership matters. We were able to pass this ordinance after hours of testimony, heartfelt testimony on both sides, but with courage. And not only did we pass it, but then we worked together with these four fine gentlemen to win that election afterwards, going door-to-door and standing out in the cold and the hot to make that happen, to make sure the will of the people here in Lebanon was, was heard and protected, because we do stand with the most vulnerable. We've done it not just legislatively, but culturally. We have in front of us these diapers, through our civic donation program, we've supported the Pro-Life Women's Centers here in Lebanon, we have the baby box, which an anonymous donor was, here in Lebanon, stepped up to take care of. And then, I've been speaking on the other end, speaking with the mayor and the city manager on benchmarking our parental leave, to make sure that our staff are taken care of, so that mothers and their children, or fathers and their children are there when needed. That is something that's important, that's something that we can do at this level. Coming up, we have, and I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, thank you for those that came in and support, those that did not, being part of this is important, and I appreciate all of that, especially those that come here and then continue to work with mothers, families, and children as we go forward. Main Street Lebanon publicized the sign-up for the Independence Day Parade, that's again open to everyone, so, as it has been for the last, this is the third year that way. The VFW Parade is on Memorial Day, and congrats to all the local graduates and the SB Award winners, thank you for your sacrifice, Mr. Lamro and Mr. Pilp for being here tonight, and that is all I have, sorry for going too long.
Mr. Cope?
Scott, I bet I have more notes than you. My head was spinning with some of the arguments and, and, I mean, actually, it was very, fairly respectful tonight, so I do appreciate that, it's a divisive, it's a divisive issue, and I feel like I'm right, that pro-life is, is the right answer, and that I, I find, I find that being a conservative and conservative-minded, a man of faith, that I, my, my beliefs and can be consistent in my worldview, I don't know how you can have love, mercy, justice on a shirt while you're talking about race-baiting issues and how we need to be better human beings, because we decided to protect unborn children in this city. We didn't ban it anyplace else in the state, they can go to Cincinnati, and if they're having, they make that choice. I find the dichotomy of thinking very, very strange, that a woman who does make that choice, who goes to a crisis pregnancy center and, and struggles with that, that issue, and decides to keep their baby, I would like to see the people on the pro-abortion side donate money. It's a choice, how about if they step up and help those that are born? I've saw numbers shirts and placards, you know, protect the born, deal with the born, and that is, that is a great issue, right? We all need to do that, we all need to step up, love and mercy and justice to those also. I would give a shout-out, unfortunately, it seems self-serving, but Family Ministries, they bought Shaker Inn for homeless, single women and orphans, or, single women and, our church is going to be going and doing some work there on the Fourth, so there are people that can step up and help, that's how you do help. I mean, we're committed, needs to love and care for each other, and listen to each other, and figure out how to respectfully disagree on this divisive issue, so, oh boy, diapers, money, I mean, there are, there are people that need help, and there are avenues to help rather than hate on each other, which there was some of that tonight, that I don't understand how they can be so inconsistent in their beliefs. I can be very consistent in my belief of pro-life and sanctity of life. That's all I have to say, and I'm anxious to hear if my daughter wants anything at the SB Awards.
I got notes, too. And they might be a little scattered, because I've got a few different things to, to mention. First thing I want to mention is our moratorium, just so that people understand, this is not a yes or no, this is a give everyone more opportunity to really look into things, and on that note, I just want to mention how proud I am to be part of this group of council persons, and that we really do take the time to look into issues and make sure that the decisions that we're making, that we feel really good about those decisions, and that we have all the information that we need to do that. Let's see here, what else do I have for you? You know, the other thing that I'm really proud of is that we live in a country where we can have differing views, and like tonight, we were able to be here, and everyone can share their views in a, you know, polite way, and that's, that's allowed, and we get to have those different thoughts and opinions, and for us, we're the ones that have to make decisions based on those sometimes. You know, over the past few years, there's been kind of an issue of, let's believe some science, let's look at science, and something that I've heard that really spoke to me on the, the issue of abortion and, and life in human beings in general, is that we have, over the, over many years, looked at different types of people as inhuman, and that's how we decided it was okay to treat them as not human. This happened with Native Americans, it happened with African-Americans, happened with Jews, and it's happened with unborn babies. And if we can look at people as not human, then it's a lot easier to treat them poorly, to end their life, and to do many other things that we feel are appropriate to do to beings that are not humans. And the wonderful thing about our life at this point in time is that we do have a lot of really good technology and science, and one of those things that we have are ultrasounds. And because we can now see that that, what, what we once thought was maybe a clump of cells is a human being with a heartbeat, there's no more excuses to think of that as, as not a life, because we can see that that life is there. And I'll try not to get emotional about this, but I am one of those people that saw a life on that screen and saw it gone, not by my choice, and I fought for that life, and I cried for that life, and it might have looked like a clump of cells to some, but to me, it was a baby who was going to grow up and be eighteen one day, and get married one day, and join the rest of my family, and it didn't get to happen, and that happened to me on a number of occasions, so yeah, I do get to speak on this, I do. And I also am a woman who has carried four children, and those pregnancies were pretty terrible for my body. And by the time I found out I was pregnant with my fourth child, it was a pretty difficult blow to our family to hear this information, I was not prepared for it, I was not expecting it, and yes, we were doing all that we could to prevent that from happening, because it could be life-threatening for me, and it was. And it was a very difficult pregnancy, and I was sick from the beginning to the end, and I will have lifelong effects from it. But the other thing that I have, excuse me, is a child who, while we were discussing this with council member last night, you know, hey, we've got, you know, what time are you coming tonight? She climbed onto my lap, and she said, Mom, I love my family, and I love my house, and I love my precious baby kiddies, and I love you, mommy. And she gave me the biggest hug. So, yeah, I'm willing to sacrifice my life for that child, and I was not willing to sacrifice hers for mine. And there did come a day when my doctor had to say to me, thank you, there did come a day where my doctor had to say to me, hey, we've been away in your life and hers, and now it's time, she's got, she has to come into this world, and hopefully both of you are just going to be fine, and thank God we were. So. So, on that note, I'll just mention another quote that I absolutely love on this topic, which is, there are no accidental babies, only accidental parents. So, proud to be here with you all.
I like your notes better than mine.
I am surrounded by orators, and it's, it's amazing to be on a board with you, and I thank you for your leadership and for what you do for our community. It was, the meeting tonight, I thought, was very, very good. Everybody did a fantastic job, thank you for, for abiding by the rules and for letting everybody speak. It's a unbelievably hard topic to dive into, and when I wrote the character in Heart of a People is revealed by how it treats its most vulnerable, that was, that was a big deal, because that was, that was the main genesis of the, the ordinance that we passed in last year. And moving forward, we have to commit to work across racial, ethnic, religious, and political, economic divides, just like we, we listen today. I mean, there were, there were people from all walks of life, if we aim to protect the sanctity of life. And I think, I think that Lebanon has a unbelievable track record of doing that, whether it's Doug Shope riding 500 miles in two days to raise 24 E N L C, whether it's our Safe on Main organization, whether it's the, I just forgot their new name, I always say Interfaith in my head.
Family Promise.
Family Promise, sorry. Whether it's Family Promise who, who purchased a hotel to bring mothers and children, homeless mothers and children in need into there and provide them a place to stay, whether it's a baby box that, that we've been working on for, for a couple months, whether it's Elizabeth's New Life Center where we, where we support through our civic donations and through our, through diaper drives and, and things like that, and whether it's just people that, that call us individually and ask us for help, we are, we're available, and we are here to, to be that, that listening ear and that helping hand, so I just want to, I just want to thank the City of Lebanon for, for their, for their stance and for their, for their fight for life, and thank you, Joe, for being here tonight. I know you, you flew in and you were, you're on your way here, so I'm going to, I want to make sure to present one of these to you, and right up here, shake your hand.
Beautiful sound.
And for your leadership.
Yeah.
While you're on council, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Keeping my seat warm.
I'm trying, I'm a little smaller.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion to close this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call a roll. Since we're sharing, I just want to let you all know that I will age myself, but my wife and I had a surprise child during her 41st year, and that daughter will be the valedictorian of Wyoming High School this weekend. Slightly less conservative community than what you're used to out here. We couldn't be prouder, so it all works out.
Thank you, Dan.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, and happy Pro-Life Day, May 25th, in the city of Lebanon.